Good. Um, hi, everyone. Um, you know, welcome to L C S twenty twenty two. This is the first regular session. Say goodbye to deadlock. Uh, my name is Ryan Kim, and it's my pleasure to chair this session. Uh, we have three great talks about deadlock. These will all be long form presentations, so about fifteen minutes presentation and a five minutes Q and A. Uh, so you know, um, since we're, you know, a little bit over time already, let's get started. Please leave your questions to after the talk. You can always put them into the Q and A session and address them. So the first paper is traversal packets opportunistic bypass packets for deadlock recovery. The speaker is Zhang Zhi Chang Chen. Zhang Chen is studying at National University of Defense Technology for a degree in Masters of Engineering. His research interests include computer architecture and microprocessor design. Um, please, um, please share your screen at this time. Uh, I think you're muted still.
You are unmuted. You may have shared your screen and start.
Yeah, um, just to let you know, um, I'll try to let you know when you have about three minutes remaining.
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. The pleasure to be here with you today. Let me introduce myself first. I am from National University of Defense Technology. My presentation will concern primarily about deadlock in network ownership. And my talk will be five parts. To begin with, I will introduce the related research about deadlock in recent years. I will also analyze a deadlock problem finding engineer practice. Then I will explain the motivation of our work. After that, I will explain the method of boot bypass and how it works. Next, I will show the experimental results based on Jim five simulator. And finally, I will talk about our contribution and the direction needed for the study. Now. Uh, now let's turn to the first part of my presentation. Network ownership technology is the cornerstone of multiple processors. Deadlock freedom is a significant concern in L C and it has always been a focus of related researching. The formation of deadlock is closely related to cache coherence, routing algorithms, and topology. For multiple processors, more core during mean more computing power, the increase in the uh, the thing. The increase in the number of costs had both created pressure on the network ownership. With the increase of network scale and increasingly complicated network structure, it becomes the more and more difficult for passive and appearance network could be there. If all if the deadlock problem cannot be solved correctly, uh, the event of the chip may fail. Uh, let's now look at the deadlock caused by shared response channel. We found it when we test achieve as the slide show show. There are eight routers in the network. Some device are connected to the network through this router. Uh, due to the layout, S N two is connected to R three. The communication between patient two and S N two need to go through the network on chip. S one, S five, and S six have a similar situation. A large number of requests may block the physical channel between R two and R three. Responses cannot return and deadlock occurs. The deadlock caused the serious performance loss when they use the chip. Uh, the point I'm trying to make here is that it all has to be due carefully. Um, now let's then turn our attention to all, uh, to how to resolve it. That a lot of solution can be divided into two categories. That of awareness and that of recovery. Uh, the basic idea behind avoiding deadlock involves making the channel dependency graph or cyclic. By prohibiting just enough turns, deadlock can be avoided. Another proposed approach is on bubble flow control, uh, which can avoid the deadlock by inserting a bubble in a wormhole solution. Before recovering from the deadlock, we have to detect it first. Because they think approach can be classified into two categories. Detection based on threshold and that based on problems. Uh, detection based on threshold detects deadlock by assessing block the time. When the block the time of a packet is larger than a given threshold, it is judged as a deadlock. This method is easy to implement, and however, its occurrence cannot be granted. It can tell the difference between deadlock and congestion. Um, the key to recovering from deadlock is to break the channel dependency circle. A path that enables uh, packets to get out of the deadlock circle is therefore necessary. In other words, given a find a path that enables packets to get out of the deadlock circle. To achieve this, uh, it's capable we see you the water channel. It provides block a block the package with the way out at the current router. Uh, this approach is simple but costly. Uh, without introducing extra buffer resource, they spend then existing resources to to resolve deadlock. Uh, swap, exchange, block the packet with the buffer the packet as the next hope. Uh, that's all I want to say about the related research. And now I want to introduce the motivation of our work. We found many similarities between the traffic in the network and chip and the traffic in the city. Let's take the example of what happens when we drive through the crossroads. There are three options available. Uh, go straight, turn left, or turn right. For the consideration of coaster, vehicles that go straight and vehicles that turn right may share the same. Make sure the same land. Therefore, there is a common situation that because that turn right are blocked by vehicles that go straight. Although the right line may be clear. If vehicle that turn right can bypass vehicles that go straight, the block the time can be greatly reduced. Inspired by the crossroads, we observe a unique kind of packet inside of the deadlock circle, which we refer to as carousel package. The feature of this package is that the next requested buffer is full, but the subsequent buffer is available. As the finger shows, a carousel packet will jump out of the original dependency chain as the next hope. This this movement can break the channel dependence check, uh, which can be used to resolve deadlock and congested. Uh, there are two phases in a carousel, positive carousel and negative carousel. Positive carousel is in our product productive direction and negative carousel is the operator. When the block time exceeds the threshold, negative carousel will be triggered. Uh, I have explained the motivation of our work. Let's turn to the next issue. How to implement the bypass mechanism? Uh, in this section, we will introduce details of the proposed algorithm and hardware implementation. Uh, router bypass is a mechanism designed to reduce latency by skipping intermediate nodes. Uh, smart is a single circle multi hop carousel network that it works as follows. Uh, after winning local arbitration, a fleet will send a setup request to set to set up a multiple pass. An intermediate node allows the fleet to bypass only where it received a setup request and the red and the next router has a free receipt. And finally, no local fleet is requesting the same output. If a local fleet competes for the same output with the bypass later, this bypass later had to be buffered because of priority. Uh, that's why it requires the next router to have a free water channel. This characteristic prevents router bypass from being used directly to resolve deadlock. Because in the deadlock circle, the next router can cannot provide a free water channel. That will make the following adjustments so that the process works as follows. Uh, before link carousel, uh, carousel pack will send a carousel request to the next router. Where an extra control signal where this carousel request contains the routing information and the block the time of the carousel package. Uh, since the next router may receive more than one carousel request, it's a master performer arbitration and will send back our carousel H P K to the winner. Uh, as we saw earlier, uh, there may be more than one carousel package competing for the same output. Uh, the bypass unit is responsible for handling conflicts. Uh, it will select a winner and ignore other requests based on the block the time. Uh, the field request will not be resolved. Uh, furthermore, a carousel package may conflict with local packets. This pa- this conflicts can be regarded as the conflict between input and imports. Uh, there will only one request or local package that participates in arbitration on behalf of this import. As this finger shows, only one local package or carousel request will participate in arbitration because the two cannot exist at the same time.
Zhang, yeah, about three minutes.
Uh, thank you. That's all our algorithm and hardware implementation. Now we come to the next point, which is evaluation. And because of the uh, schedule, I will briefly introduce this. We use Jim five with Ghana to model the network. We compare lenses and throughput with a set of resolution including uh, dead or orders and deadlock recovery. Uh, forcing that forcing static traffic patterns, we compare average to packet latency at a different injection rate for various traffic patterns, including shuffle transport, good rotation, and doing from random. And we can see here on this chart, carousel provides law of property materially equal latency compared with other resolution. Furthermore, it can provide a rest improvement saturation throughput. Next, we will take a look at a chart showing the percentage of positive and negative carousel in total carousel. It is helpful for us to understand where the performance improve comes from. And finally, uh, the selection of set hold is important but difficult. Uh, we will we evaluate how set hold affect our framework. The deadlock set hold is used to determine when to try the carousel now so you are the back. It's a the set whole time used to distinguish between congestion and deadlock. Um, uh, we said seven different the threat hopes to evaluate how the deadlock set hold affects network performance. The threat holds are set from thirty two circles to two thousand and forty eight circles. This graph shows the average latency for different threshold with increasing injection rate. Average latency is directly affected by the deadlock thresholds. Uh, that completes the evaluation session, and this brings me to the end of my presentation. Uh, to conclude, we we observe a unique kind of package inside of that law circle. We then set up a water channel that enables carousel package to get off of the channel dependence check in a timely fashion. Uh, to support it, we propose the low cost bypass implementation. By making four years of the carousel package, the following functions can be realized. First, more accurate deadlock detection by making the carousel package uh, leaving the deadlock loop in time. Some forced deadlock judgments caused by congestion can be eliminated. Uh, thus improving the accuracy of deadlock detection. The second is faster deadlock recovery. The leaving of the carousel package can quickly break the deadlock circle, thus recovering from the deadlock. And the another third is higher saturation throughput. Carousel package can bypass some congestion zones. Thus, it is helpful for for throughput improvement. Uh, that that concludes my talk for today, and now if you have any question, I will be happy to answer them for you.
Great, thanks, Zhang. Um, so anybody in the audience wants to ask a question, um, please, um, place it into the Q and A. And I'll read it as um, they come in. Um, but first off, I have a question about um, the performance, at least with respect to something like smarts. You referenced it in the presentation, but I didn't see any comparisons to it. Um, did you ever, did you compare um, this work against the performance of the smarts running?
Uh, uh, sorry, uh, do you mind repeating that request, please?
I couldn't quite understand that, Zhang. Could you repeat that?
Uh, he wants you to repeat the question, man.
Oh, okay. Um, did you compare the the work against smarts? Um, we have, um, how how much better in performance does this do over the the smart routing algorithm?
Oh, oh, thank you. Uh, that's a very good question. Uh, smart is designed, uh, firstly, smart is event to reduce the latency and our framework is developed to result deadlock. But at the same time, it has it can uh, bring some performance improvement at the same time. Uh, add for latency, make a add for latency, our framework, uh, a week, we many can compare the latency with some better recommendations. That's a best of first, the X Y swap and fit and so on.
Okay, um, uh, thanks, Zhang. I I think, you know, um, since um, smarts is itself um, enforces deadlock freedom in the flows. Um, you can turn um, base restrictions. It would be interesting to see how this work compares to that's um, when it tries to resolve deadlock. I think, I think, you know, after um, we started seeing congestion, but um, any questions from the audience? Okay, um, thank you, Zhang. Um, thank you for the talk. Um, I think we'll move on to the next speaker, the next presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, the next talk or next paper is deadlock freedom in computational neuroscience simulators. Um, the speaker is Tim Stottman. Um, Tim Stottman is a PhD student within the Chair of Integrated Digital Systems and Circuit Design at R W T H Aken. Um, his research interests include neuromorphic computing platforms and the uses for simulating biologically motivated learning algorithms in spiking neural networks. He earned his MSc in Electrical Engineering at R W T H Aken. Um, please go ahead. Um, Tim, I'll let you know with about when you have about three minutes remaining. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the kind introduction. Can you see my screen? All right. All right, I hope you can hear me. So, um.
Yes, uh, we can hear you guys. The screen is is clear.
All right, great. Thanks a lot. All right, so I would like to introduce to you the results of our research on deadlock freedom and computational neuroscience simulators. Uh, we, that is, Vida Zobani, Kevin Kaut, Tobias Demek and myself from EBITA Aken. Uh, Vida Zobani, who is in fact the main author and driver of this publication, sadly couldn't join us here today. Uh, she's currently located in Iran, where I rest in no internet access is heavily regulated. Um, so I would like to thank the organizers again for letting me step in on such short notice. So I would like to begin my talk on telling you a little bit about neuroscience simulators in general. So as the name suggests, neuroscience simulators are their simulation platforms and stimulation tools to learn and understand how the human brain works. So in these simulators, we are looking at neurons, um, synapses and neural networks, but not from a machine learning perspective, but actually looking at a higher degree of biological realism. So we are looking in these simulators and things like neuronal membrane voltages and how neurons actually um, create spiking messages to other neurons and how they communicate and how that translates into learning behavior like structural plasticity and so on. And this poses some certain very interesting communication requirements on communication platforms. Um, so, sorry. First of all, uh, why do we want to do this? So these communication, uh, these compute computational neuroscience platforms. On the one hand, we use them for medical purposes, obviously. Understanding the human brain means understanding diseases in the human brain. So, uh, this could help us solving problems of diseases like Alzheimer's. On the other hand, and their computational purposes, right? Understanding how the human brain computes and it computes very efficiently, like matter matter of fact, the human brain runs at twenty watts or something like that. Uh, understanding that better than before um, could help future compute platforms to perform in a more efficient and better way. So, um, from a communication perspective, an interesting property of these simulators is that usually within a vast number of tightly coupled processing nodes, um, calculating neuron behavior is computationally quite expensive. So dedicated platforms usually are distributed systems where the computation is distributed over many nodes. If you want to scale up these systems in the future to billions or even billions of neurons, you will need multiple thousands or hundred thousands or even millions of processing nodes in theory. So, um, also, we have a number of very interesting required features in these systems. On the one hand, we want these simulations to run accelerated with regards to biological real time. On the one hand, they should be reproducible to enable research actually, and also flexible, because we do not know how the brain works yet, and new insights and research comes in every day. Uh, so we should be able to adapt the system and do fast prototyping. And all in all, this poses some interesting challenges on the communication. Because on the one hand, obviously, we have communication limitations given the current technology. There's only so much bandwidth latency we can get out of a node. And at the same time, there's a reoccurring trade off between the latency of the system and its generality. And this trade off will come up again and again in the upcoming presentation. So our research focused on deadlocks in these systems. So how do these requirements affect the deadlock and handling or the deadlock behavior in general? Um, though the requirements to them are, we want a large scale simulation that should run accelerated and reproducible. So, um, the first requirement, large scale simulations leads us into the aspect of a frequent deadlock occurrence. A very lab system consists consisting of many nodes that are highly interconnected and has higher probability of deadlock, deadlocks occurring. At the same time, all three of these requirements, especially the accelerated simulation, requires us to have a low latency communication computation. But also the reproducibility of the system requires all latency communication because we have some tough real time requirements. Uh, neurons sending spikes to each other, the spikes have to um, arrive at the target neuron in a certain amount of time. If the target neuron is located on another computational node, this gives you a tougher requirement on how long this spike is allowed to travel within the system. So our deadlock handling scheme should kind of tackle these two problems here. Um, of course, there are multiple ways on handling deadlocks. Uh, the most simple way is kind of the ostrich algorithm of sticking your head in the sand and just ignoring deadlocks all along. However, this is obviously not a solution here. Also, detecting and recovering deadlocks is something we can't really do because um, the probability of that box is just too high. And recovering from deadlocks encourages additional latency. So what we are opting for is avoiding deadlocks altogether. And this means we have to um, take a look at how do we provision or manage the resources of our system? With resources, I mean, things like the buffer sizes and um, the channels themselves. Um, talking again a little bit about the trade off that we have to do. Um, looking at many state of the art solutions out there, also employed in some state of the art neuromorphic systems. On the, let's say, on the right hand side, um, you have a lot of topology agnostic solutions. These are highly flexible solutions. But they come at a cost of sometimes incurring thing, introducing things like duplicate packets or errors in general, dropping packets. And this does not allow for reproducible simulations because it incurs a certain amount of error. From a computational perspective, this might be all right, but it um, in there's reproducible research. And this is the other side. Um, basically, topology dependent solutions exist, which allow for reproducible and very fast, um, very fast computations and communication. But then again, these are not really flexible and cannot be adapted for future use. They cannot really be scaled up. So we are looking for some kind of solution that handles both of these, both of these problems at the same time. Um, so we started our research by defining kind of a baseline system on which we want to avoid these deadlocks. So as I said, um, to solve this, the system looks like a distributed architecture consisting of many independent nodes. Um, and the design space it spans consists of the topology of the network, um, the routing algorithm employed, the switching mechanism, and the casting scheme. Of course, that is not all, but these are kind of the major players for us here, uh, which we base our implementation and our approach on. So talking first about the chosen topology of a system. Um, previous research has shown that a very promising, a very promising topology that can be used in these systems is the so called super mesh. A super mesh is basically just a regular mesh. A super mesh is basically just a regular mesh network, as you know them, superimposed with mesh, with mesh networks going into farther directions. So as you can see here on the bottom right, it's a very straightforward approach, even though it looks a bit convoluted. Each node is directly connected to its neighbors, to its direct neighbors. And also in this example, to neighbors three hops away in all four directions. This can be more than three, this can be three, five and six, or only two or something like this. However, different kinds of neuroscience problems and scenarios can be efficiently mapped to this topology as we have showed and seen in the past. This is proven to meet biological requirements and introduces a latency cut, but at the same time being as flexible as possible. So this is the baseline topology, we want to avoid the deadlocks in. Other design decisions or design space explorations include the casting scheme, where it has been shown that a combination of unicasting and broadcasting, for example, broadcasting via these kind of long hop connections that I've just shown you. And unicasting can actually lead to quite flexible results that can be scaled up in an interesting manner. The routing algorithm that we base our exploration on is the dimension order routing because it's very simple, straightforward. It doesn't need routing tables, which is something that we want to avoid definitely at all costs. Because in previous implementations of other groups, we have seen routing tables to be actually be one of the bottlenecks. And obviously in measures, it already deadlocked free. And finally, as the switching method goes, we opt for one mode of switching, but actually everything that I'm going to talk about here can also be extended to work with other switching techniques, extender and forward. To verify all, to verify and also explore all of these different methods. We wrote a simple C++ system C based simulation tool. Excuse me. And the simulation tool was used first of all to implement this scheme here and to simulate different kinds of loads. So different kinds of bandwidth latency requirements, considering different kinds of neuron and network structures that could be used by neuroscientists to do simulations with. And then this simulation tool, we derived the following approach of our implementation. So. I hope you can hear me still all right. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so basically, if we want to avoid in such a system, the main idea here is to break the try, the channel cyclic dependencies that we're having here. So the cyclic dependencies in a super mesh. The idea is thinking again about how a super mesh looks like is you have a straightforward normal mesh and a superimposed mesh in higher dimension. So our idea is here to basically do a little divide and conquer approach. First of all, we break the channel cyclic dependencies, so we look at the cyclic dependency graph in mesh like networks, so basically in the mesh itself. And then we add an additional constraint to avoid cyclic dependencies in channels with different hop lengths. And the minute eliminating all of these CDs then will result in a deadlock free super mesh system. So talking first about deadlock avoidance in mesh like networks, actually in the previous, in the previous presentation that you have seen, we already saw some of these, some of these approaches here, for example, escape virtual channels and bubble flow control. However, not all of these are quite compatible to the system that we envision. For example, escape, which is kind of a special case of virtual channels, is not directly or easily compatible with broadcasting. Virtual channels themselves are nice to have, but they are highly costly in terms of required buffers. So if you have more than one, for example. After different kinds of explorations that you can read up in our publication on, we have seen that a combination of dimension order routing and broadcast first algorithm is the most compatible, flexible solution. Not broadcast first, I'm sorry, bubble flow control. So bubble flow control basically introduces these kinds of empty spaces in the buffers that we want to send. And DOR breaks the cyclic dependencies that we have. So so far so good for mesh like networks, going up to the superimposed high dimensional meshes. We came up with a simple, with one simple rule and on top of this DOR and BFC mechanism to fix the problem here too. So basically, we look at the length of links and only allow packets to travel through links in descending order, going through the longest first, then the second longest, and so on and so on. So all in all, this results in four simple routes that we implemented in our system C simulation tool. The first one being the one I just told you, going over these long off directions first and only then changing dimension later on. The second rule is basically the DOR algorithm, where packets can only change dimensions in descending dimension order. In X, Y dimension only, you always go in one direction first and then the other. And routes three and four are the bubble flow control routes, where we basically only allow packets to switch between these kinds of priorities here, length and directions. If there exists at least two, three spots in the buffer of the lower priority path. The fourth rule also refers to bubble flow control packets and the generating node can only be routed to output buffers if at least two, three spots exist in a selected buffer. Okay, we implemented these routes in our system C simulator and saw that they actually do in fact avoid deadlocks as we wanted. However, there were some caveats to the proposed approach. First of all, using DOR obviously incur some kind of imbalance traffic distribution. So I mean, this, this directly makes sense if you look at this graph here. If you have a node in the middle during a broadcasting, the broadcasting to, for example, the right hand column to all these nodes in the right hand column will pass through the middle node. So the middle node has five times as much traffic as all the others around it. So this is a waste of both of bandwidth and increases the latency of such a system. The solution for this that we use here is some kind of balanced DOR approach, where we impose a second virtual network on top of it. So here, basically each packet can either go the normal way that I just showed you, which would be the blue network or the yellow network, which is basically just another DOR algorithm running in 90 degrees rotated against the blue one. And we have seen in our simulation that in the best case, the maximum latency between two nodes in a very highly congested case can be reduced by up to 35%. This is one thing. The other thing that we have seen is the impact of preserving these bubbles in the bubble flow control scheme. So adding bubble flow control on top of vanilla DOR algorithm. In this case, the average latency increases by up to 40% in a congested case. This is something that can be tackled by just increasing the buffer sizes because that's the reason for it, right? We don't want to fill up the buffers, we always keep one element in the buffer empty, so we effectively have the smaller buffer size available. So the congested congestion that happens early on. And this is one way to tackle this, but a future research will also take a careful look at this. And all in all, this leads me to the conclusion of my talk. To sum it up, we see that there is a higher possibility of deadlock occurrence in general and flexible platforms, the more flexible they are. And given the design space composed of topology scheme, routing, casting and switching, we saw that generic deadlock handling, let's say, of the shelf solutions are pretty ineffective. Proposed solutions, the proposed solution consists of a combination of balanced DOR and BS BFC and using an additional restriction, all in all, resulting in four rules. And that can be seen here again, that can be very simply implemented in a simple routing protocol. If you're interested in that, please read up on our publication. Future work currently mostly focuses on reliability issues in such a system. And with that, I would like to conclude my talk and thank you all for your attention. Are there any questions?
Right, thank you, Tim. So there is a question from Alan Baum. The issue with DOR is that it takes N times the number of wires depending on the dimension order, assuming physical channels. How does that compare with just making wider things?
Okay, let me, let me just read that one, so. Yeah, that is a, that is a very interesting question, these. I'm actually not sure if I understand the, the question correctly. I mean, just making wider links doesn't really solve our problem of breaking the cyclic dependencies the way that DOR does it now. Because that's the reason we want to use DOR. We want to break the cyclic dependencies within the mesh part of our super mesh network.
If I understand the question correctly, I think you're, you're increasing the order, right? Yeah, skipping notes, right? So you're increasing the order, right? So instead of having these kind of skip links, what, what's the advantage of that over just having maybe a regular 2D mesh with wider links?
I mean, the problem is that, so, so there are many aspects of this question. One of it is that in typical neuroscience scenarios that you have, you sometimes want to simulate parts of the brain that are far away from each other, but have some kind of highway between them. So there would be gray matter in the human brain, white matter in the human brain. So you have basically the gray matter connections that are close to each other and require fast links. And you have the white matter, which is, which are target neurons that are very far away and also require very fast links. And to have basically a very simple mapping algorithm or to allow for a very simple mapping algorithm, we instead came up with these long hops to say, okay, basically to emulate these very fast, high, long, long distance wide data connections. We also add long distance physical connections between different links. Right, we don't want to push more data with the same link. We want to have data faster at a very distant point in our mesh, in our mesh like network. I hope that answers your question to a certain degree.
Um, does that, Alan, or would you ask, would you like to ask a follow up question? He's mentioned assumption wire length dominates, doesn't save much latency. But I think from your response, it's, it's more of a mapping, it's an application mapping benefit rather than a latency one, is that correct or?
Yes, this is, it's very specific to the application that we are looking at here. So these long up connections, I mean, it's an interesting part in research to see how these long up connections come, which basically work on other applications that I want to just described. If you would like to know more about that, I would also direct you to towards Vida Zobani here. As, as also a good context to talk about these kinds of things.
Okay, I hope that answers your question, Alan. Is there any other questions from the, the audience? If, if it hasn't, if you'd like to follow up, Alan, you know, feel free to respond again in the chat. From your deadlock freedom rules, it's, it appears that the routing itself is deterministic. There is always a single routing path based on the rules, or you're always taking the longer links first and so forth, right? Did you ever consider the other different routes through the network, given, you know, congestion?
Yeah, actually, this is, I think, I guess one aspect of this balanced DOR algorithm, right? So in this case, this is actually a random choice here. So a packet could, one of our simulations included just having a 50, 50% chance of going through the one road or the other road. This was not directly motivated by the congestion, so we did not look, look at the congestion to do this choice. We did just do this choice randomly and this already balances network morale and basically lessens the load of congestion that we have here. So this is at least one aspect, I got, one possible way of doing what you just described, maybe.
Oh, no, the, the reason why I was asking was, I think, you know, you're, the way that the deadlock happens is that you take, you know, the, the, the two length links first, so the skipping links first, right? And so there's, there's two options, I think, right? So if coming from that center node, you want to go to nodes to the right, right? So you can either take the skipping link or you can take the two, one, one length links, right? And so I imagine that, you know, if you have a lot of far away traffic, it's going to overload the skipping links more often because it's, that's the first choice, right? Versus having those, you know, one hop links. And I was wondering if there was any balancing on that end, right? I don't, I don't think this, this diagram necessarily shows that the super part of the mesh, right? And I'm wondering.
I, I think I got, I got your question, sorry. I was really just talking about the mesh part of the mesh network. And what you just described, yes, this is definitely a very interesting part of what we are currently also looking at. And definitely an issue that we are looking into in the future further.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. If there's no other questions, you know, thank you, Tim, for your presentation. It was very good. And I think we are ready to move on to the next talk. Okay, the next presentation, our paper is Java, Joint Application Aware Oblivious Routing and Static Virtual Channel Allocation. This speaker is Uday Malappa. Uday Malappa is studying his PhD in electrical and computer engineering at the University of California, San Diego, USA. He has a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the Berlin Institute of Technology and Science, India, before joining UC San Diego for his PhD. Uday worked as a physical design engineer at Qualcomm India and Intel India for a total of six years. In addition to applying Boolean optimization for NLC routing, Uday's primary research lies in the interface of machine learning, in particular, active learning, EDA and hardware acceleration. Right, please, Uday, if you're, I'll give you a reminder about three minutes left in the presentation.
Sure, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the introduction and I'm Uday and today I'm going to discuss joint application aware and oblivious routing along with simultaneous static virtual channel allocation that we abbreviate as Java. And as you know, network concepts are widely used in today's system on chips and multi-core processor designs. And the network on chip is basically a network of routers and associated cores connected using some communication links. And the routing algorithm is a systematic derivation of, of a path between any source and destination pair in the network. And NLC routing can be primarily classified into oblivious and adaptive routing and where in the oblivious routing, the path, routing path is completely determined by the source and destination address. And subcategories of oblivious could be application aware and application unaware routing, where routings like DOR are, 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 they do not really care about application, but very suboptimal because the solution space is not really catered towards a particular application. And in terms of application aware routings, there are works like BSR and BS R M, which are primarily heuristic based application aware routings and layered routing, which also is an improved version, but in terms of optimality, but all suffers from certain suboptimalities because of not solving the routing of all the flows simultaneously. So to, to, to overcome some of these limitations in the previous works, we propose Java, which is, which tries to address most of the previous issues. And in terms of the terminology, we focus on a M by N 2D mesh. And we can represent this as a directed graph where the nodes in the graph represent the processing cores and the associated routers and the edges represent the communication links between these routers. And in this work, we are, the, the terminology that we follow is that packet is the unit of flow that needs to be transferred from a source to destination. And packets are broken into flits and the demand between a source and destination pair is the number of flow units that need to be transferred. And the channel load on any particular communication link is the sum of packets that physically utilize a specific channel. And yeah, typically, multiple input buffers are provided for each physical channel to give an illusion of having multiple virtual channels. And to, to implement Java, we assume a table based router where the table has the information for the next routing path at each router based on the source and destination address. And like discussed in the previous talks, deadlock with an analogy of converting the mesh to a directed graph, cyclic dependency of these buffers while routing prevents the forward progressing of routing packets and that is a scenario that we call as deadlock graphic in, in terms of graphs. And the previous works proposed a systematic way of generating deadlock free routes and using the turn model. And the idea again is to avoid these deadlocks or the cyclic dependencies by restricting certain flow turns. And as you see here, there are three primary turn models, west first, north first. And as you see here, there are three primary turn models, west first, north last and negative first. And because each of them can be rotated by ninety degrees, you have three times four, twelve turn models in total and deadlock freedom is assured with any number of virtual channels with these turn models. Formerly, the problem that we are solving is given a set of K flows with the terminology that I've introduced before for the flows, say, the flows are indexed from one to K. And each flow is associated with a source node, a destination node, and the demand of that particular source and destination pair. And yeah, we assume that the source is not the same as destination and multiple flows can have the same source and destination and a route for a flow is a continuous path from source to destination. And the objective is to find a deadlock free routing and a V C assignment solution such that the maximum channel load of the network is optimal. And why do we minimize the maximum channel load or M C L is because of its high correlation with network throughput and latency. And the hypothesis is what we start with and our simulation results in fact corroborate our hypothesis. And for this problem statement that I have discussed, there are yeah, strict ordering routing algorithms like X Y ROM overturn, which are essentially application independent and therefore very suboptimal. And some of the heuristics provided in the previous works also depend too much on these turn models or either make the routes minimal paths. They buy congesting some parts of the network and therefore the network is prone to reach saturation with moderate injection rate, injection rates. And the layered routing is again of all the works, layer routing seems to be the most optimal, but again they, the layered routing uses the analogy of representing virtual channels as layers and tries to avoid deadlogs by, you know, switching between the layers. But again, the main drawback is that they, in that paper, they route one flow after the other, therefore they do not really consider all the flows together and we have, in our experiments, we have seen just changing the order of these flows would lead to different solutions. So it's going to be very difficult to find the right ordering so that you get an optimal solution when you have many, many flows. And therefore, to address this, we simultaneously look at all the flows and also look at the routing and V C allocation together. Meaning we don't, we do not really restrict the flows from not making certain turns. As long as the V C allocation is, you know, avoiding deadlocks. So this intuitively, this opens up the solution space for routing and the network becomes more evenly balanced in terms of load and that is what is going to probably lead to a better throughput and latency. And channel dependency graph is a directed graph where the vertex set corresponds to the set of channels in the network and the edges in the channel dependency graph represent the direct dependency from a channel I to channel J. If there is a routing flow that transitions from channel I to channel J in adjacent consecutive links. And to take it to the case of networks with multiple virtual channels is layered channel dependency graph where we can assume that there are H virtual channels per link. And so each link in the mesh has these H virtual channels and terminology is that C H E is a virtual channel on a link E with the virtual channel index H. So for the sake of simplicity, we can assume that these virtual channels are indexed in some order from some ascending order. And the vertex set C corresponds to these E, the number of edges times the number of virtual channels in the network and in this case, the direct dependency between the nodes is about, again, if there is a routing of flow that transitions along two consecutive links, but now just not about the links, but it's also about the associated virtual channels as well. The proposition that we have is there are two primary conditions that need to be followed. First is if a route on two consecutive links corresponds to a restricted turn, the V C index assigned to the second link must be increasing. So what I mean is whenever there is a restricted turn, say, we have twelve turn models and we have picked up, say, one turn model that we wanted to follow in the network. And on the restricted turn, the V C index should be strictly increasing, it cannot be the same. It should transition from V C index two to V C index three. And in rest of the cases, when there is no turn or when there are not, when there is no restricted turn. The V C index of the second link can remain the same or strictly increasing, meaning it has to be non decreasing. It can stay the same, but on the restricted turn, it has to increase. And the big idea therefore is to increase the V C index as the restricted turn and never decrease the index otherwise. And the proposition that we have is if a joint application aware oblivious routing and static V C assignment for a set of clothes there's to these two conditions, the corresponding solution is deadlock free. Mathematically, we have the proof in the paper, but I'll try to give an intuitive proof for this. Say, the L C D G representation for a very small graph with three virtual channels is shown here. And V C one, V C two and V C three are the ordering of the virtual channels. And deadlock avoidance on a same layer is very, very trivial to see because every time we have a restricted turn, that's where the cyclic dependencies happen and we, it's almost, it's it's impossible to have a cyclic dependency because on a particular layer, because you can never come back to the same point on the same layer. So and between layers also, this is an extension again. Because when when there is, suppose if this is the orange node is where the restricted turn happens because the nodes correspond to the turns. And because there's a restricted turn, the V C one has to probably go to V C two or V C three. And therefore, you can never go down to a lower layer because of the conditions that I've described before. And therefore, you can never come back to the the virtual channel that you started. And to, of course, our goal is to jointly perform this routing and V C allocation as a global optimization problem for all the flows together and this, the these constraints that I was talking about are not just a simple proposition logic where you make a statement and wanted to verify something is true or false, but it's more like a predicate logic where the you 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 would like to test something based on some other variables, meaning if a particular flow is turning in in a particular turn, if a flow is, you know, if a if flow is using a particular virtual channel, so these involve predicate logic and these satisfiability modular theories are a perfect formulations and frameworks to solve these problems that can be represented using this complex predicate logic. And our contribution is to represent this whole constraints into a pure Boolean constraints and optimization, optimization objectives. And use a S M T solver to optimally solve this for a global optimal solution.
Two and a half minutes.
Okay, the the variables that we use are alpha, beta here, which are Boolean variables indicating the flows and the assignment of V Cs. And the first condition is the flow conservation at the source and destination. And at the non-source and nondestination, you don't want the flows to just disappear into the nodes. And a flow, if if a flow is assigned to a link, it must be statically assigned to exactly one of the V Cs. And this is the deadlock conditions that I was talking about, non-decreasing and non-increasing. And we use the succinct at most one R and and constraints of S M T solver. And the load on each link is the sum of the demands assigned to it and the objective is to minimize the maximum channel load. And the complexity of Java is very, 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 very simple to formulate this, as you can see here, the number of constraints. And for the design of experiments, we validate across the various routing algorithms and synthetic benchmarks that I show here, like some of the standard synthetic benchmarks and some of the hot spot patterns that we came up with and real camcorder benchmarks from the reference that I've shown here. And yeah, in terms of the maximum channel load, you could see that Java performs superior compared to most of the routing algorithms. And in fact, all of the routing algorithms where these values here indicate the maximum channel load. And the hypothesis that we start with is if you have a lower maximum channel load, we can, if the network can withstand higher injection rates before reaching saturation. And for the flip level simulations, we use Noxim and Hornet, both the cycle accurate, highly configurable simulators and we perform on both synthetic and real benchmarks like I showed before. And as you can see here, the latency curves, the Java curve saturates at a higher injection rate as compared to other routing algorithms. Meaning you can inject more packets and still withstand, the network can still withstand it. And the details about how we modified Noxim is probably because of time, I cannot really cover that, but in terms of the camcorder, we see a similar trend again where Java achieves a better throughput, better latency for all of the four scenarios that I was showing before. And so to conclude, it's a, it's a joint application aware oblivious routing and V C allocation framework for better performance of deadlock free routes. And we avoid, unlike the previous works, we avoid unnecessary routing restrictions on the flows using these stone models. As long as there's a valid deadlock free V C assignment. And we jointly solve for all of the flows together and come, you know, come capture the complex conditional constraints using the S M T framework. And the interesting use of our work is that it can be extended to other interesting objective functions that I've mentioned in the paper and can be extended to other topologies as long as we have a proof for a particular V C avoidance strategy. And yeah, it can achieve a better performance on both the synthetic and real benchmarks in terms of the flip level simulations. And thanks for your time, feel free to ask any questions.
All right, thanks, Uday, since you know, we're on a time, maybe if we have, we have time for maybe one question. Maybe two, if anybody has any questions, feel free to place it in the Q and A section. Um, Uday, for the the flows, you mentioned that you can have multiple flows with the same source and destination. I I imagine that, you know, complicates the the algorithm a decent amount, right? Instead of keeping maybe one flow for each source and destination and using the same routing for each of those. Did you ever compare the the performance between having these separated flows for, say, the source one and destination two versus having all, you know, aggregating them all to one?
In fact, we do it the second way where each source and destination pair can have its own route, so they don't really have to follow the same route.
Oh, no, that's what I'm asking, you know, if if you combine them to the same rounds, right, all flows have with the same source and destination having the same rounds. Do you see a large decrease in performance?
My assumption is we would see, but I did not validate that.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, that's my hypothesis is that, yeah, we would see suboptimal solutions because you're congesting the load, the network non-uniformly doing that, yeah.
I I was just wondering that, you know, because you're balancing all the flows, right, from all the different sources and destinations. And I was wondering if you would see a large difference. Because I I imagine that the hardware would start to get more complicated. If you, you know, if you, if you had to look at destination and, you know, you know, the fact is this flow whenever I do. So, yeah.
Right, yeah, I I agree, yes.
Yeah, I think that would have been, it would be interesting to take a look at in the future.
Yeah, sure, of course, yeah, thanks.
But yeah, I don't see any questions, so for an interest of time, I think we'll end here, but you know, thank you, Uday, for the presentation. And great, thank you, everybody, for attending the first regular session.
Thank you all the speakers for presenting your papers and thank you, Ryan, for sharing the session. And thanks all the attendees, so we'll take a short break now. The next session starts in about five minutes, so five to seven minutes, so we'll take a short break and then we'll regroup again for and another interesting session, which is a regular session two called N O C's modeling and security. So please be with us, thank you.